Okay, it's six o'clock and I will call the September 28th, 2021 Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This evening we have Pastor Jonathan Hammond from the Royal Retreat Lutheran Parish. If you all will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we live before you this day, all who govern and serve the people of With County. May those who hold power understand that it is a trust from you to be used not for personal glory or profit but for service of the people. Drive us from cynicism, selfishness, and corruption, and grant in your mercy a just and honest government that lifts up the most vulnerable among us, and give us grace to live together in unity and peace. We pray this in all things in your holy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Can you all hear me okay on my mic? Is it close enough? Can you hear it back there? We've got these new microphones, so it's the first time using it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. I don't believe we had any citizens sign up. Would anyone like to speak? Came in late? Okay. If not, I will close Citizens Time. Next item, we have the payment of invoices.
I'll make a motion with that invoice.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any invoice that any supervisor would like to pull out or any discussion? No? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes. Move on to... Sorry. Get there. Okay, next item on the agenda is Old Business. Mr. Bear?
Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get the minutes. Okay. Sorry about that.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you, God. Thank you so much. Okay. I have a motion that we approve the minutes by Mr. Horni, and I believe I heard a second from Mr. Smith. Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions about the September 14th minutes? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Now we will move on to Old Business.
I do not have any Old Business, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no Old Business. Thank you all. We'll move down to Reports. The first item under Reports is Treasures Report. Lori Gwynn, I do not see her in the audience, so we will move on to Buildings and Grounds, and we will go back to Ms. Gwynn if she comes in. Okay. Buildings and Grounds Report.
Building and Grounds Committee met on September 21st, 2021, and made the following recommendations. Approve the change of scope and the addition of $65,100 from ARPA funds for the Lead Mine Rescue Squad building updates.
Coming from committee, we do not need a second. Does anyone have any questions or discussion?
Are they good with this? We don't have any problems.
I'll let Mr. Hankins speak. He's been working with them, but yes.
Yes, sir. This gives them the building that they're looking for. They're concerned with the growth that they forecast, that the building that was initially proposed wasn't big enough to meet their needs and didn't give them the decontamination space that they needed. So this addresses those issues and should be a building that functions and serves them well for a while. And our favorite phrase around here is turnkey. This is turnkey for them.
Good deal.
Anything else? Okay. If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Authorize the county staff to work out details for the Apex Authority and event organizers to hold a hair scramble on county property adjacent to the Apex.
Okay. Coming from committee, it does not require a second. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
I'll just make one comment, and I know there's another group that was looking as well, and that was one of the holdups, so they're kind of waiting to see what happens in the night.
Okay. Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
That's all the Buildings and Grounds Committee had.
Thank you, Supervisor Cook. We'll move down to the Water Committee report.
All right. The Water Committee met on September 21st, 2021, and recommends the following. First is amending and appropriating $2,798 to line 4401-430151 for SCADA services and repairs.
Okay. Excuse me. Coming from committee, it does not need a second. Does any supervisor have any questions or further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to add, this is coming... The town of With will be paying their fair share of the cost, so this is actually just amending and appropriating what they will be providing to us to put that back in the budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Okay. Does that raise any other questions or concerns? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right. Number two is the Brittany Green Childress account per the board's action at the September Volks meeting to grant the waiver to Ms. Childress. A billing adjustment request has been prepared to write off the account balance. The amount of the write-off is $1,082.66. In addition, the account will be final, and no further billing will be issued to Ms. Childress. The Water Committee recommends approving the write-off in the amount of $1,082.66 and to finalize... to finalize the account.
Okay. Once again, coming from committee, it does not need a second. Any questions or discussion? No? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
All right. The third one is to authorize $505,000 in ARPA funds to apply toward the following water repair projects. A is the piney pump station piping for $30,000. B is the water reserve reservoir repairs for $250,000. C is a portable generator and switching gear for $100,000. And D is the SCADA system for $125,000.
Okay. Coming from committee, it does not need a second. Does any board member have any questions or discussion? Okay. If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Is that all from the Water Committee?
That's it, ma'am.
Thank you, Supervisor Horni.
Madam Chair, before you move forward, would you like to do Fire and Rescue Committee, since it's not on here?
Sure.
Fire and Rescue Committee had to postpone their meeting from last week until last night, so was not able to be on the agenda. I will turn it over to Mr. Hankins to give a report on it.
One recommendation comes out of Fire and Rescue. Lead Mines has requested funding for a rock boat. They participated in about a dozen water rescues so far this year, and we would like to have the equipment necessary to be able to do those rescues safely for their personnel. They've raised about $14,000 toward this project, and they have a quoted purchase price on a boat that they think would serve them well. After some adjustments from last night, that quoted purchase price is $50,390, so there's a gap of about $36,400 in that funding. The committee last night recommended that the full board authorize up to $37,000 to be spent toward this project from reserves.
Thank you, Mr. Hankins. Let's see here. Okay, so coming from committee, we do not need a second, but... So the motion is that we will fund up to $37,000. Right, okay. Does that raise any questions or discussion? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hankins. And I saw Ms. Gwynn step in, so we will circle back to the Treasures Report.
Thank you, because I'm going to leave you when I'm finished, and I'll tell you about my excitement here in a minute.
Okay.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to be back and see you all again.
Hello.
Okay. In your financial report or the treasures report that you received in your packet, you will see that the consolidated account at the end of August had a balance of $62,596,789. And of that balance, the general fund contained $39,210,907. So we're still holding our own at this point. Anybody have any questions on anything?
I don't believe so.
Ms. Williams and I had a rough August, so we're really not sure what's right, wrong, and indifferent maybe in August reports, so it's a little challenging. So I do apologize for being late. I'm trying to get our tax files pulled and get those to the printers, because I know we are all waiting to receive those invitations in the mail. I did get personal property file pulled last night. My bill files had to be pulled after hours when everybody's out of the system, so it puts, you know, have to put in a little bit extra time there, which is no problem at all, but pulled personal property last night, got it sent out to the printers today. I should have a proof in tomorrow, and the bills, those and real estate, which real estate I'm in the process of pulling now, so I'll get those to the printers tomorrow. So I look for everything to mail. If it doesn't mail by Friday, they'll probably mail at least by Monday at the latest, so the middle of next week, we should have tax bills hitting the mail. So to give you an idea of where we're at on the mailing, the billing and mailing, we're mailing out 19,882 real estate bills for a total, and this is for 2021 tax only, for a total of $12,813,654. Personal property bills, there's a total of $27,724, and that dollar amount total is $9,282,080. So in all, we're mailing out a little over $47,600 tax bills, and we'll be billing out about $22,100,000. So real estate bills will include delinquent balances on there, so folks that owe a 2020 tax or prior will be included on their tax bill. Personal property, we do not include delinquent balances, so if you hear anybody, if they call you to complain or something because they didn't know they owed a balance, we can't print those on there, because the way the files pull, it doesn't pull accurately, so I've chosen to not include those on those tax bills. But that's my latest office excitement, so I hope that excites you all as well.
Okay.
I think it does, Mr. Cook. I can tell by the look on his face.
He's excited.
Does anyone have anything for me tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, I'm going to leave you, so thank you for your time, and you all have a good evening.
Thanks for everything you do, Ms. Gwynn.
I'm just interested in how much it went up.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm just interested in how much it went up.
Well, give me a call. I can give you a fair warning before your bill comes. But I'm sure your supervisor discount is included on the bill.
Yeah. We wish. Okay. Mr. Bear, anything else under Reports?
No, do not have anything else.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is New Business. Let's see, Consent Calendar.
Make a motion to approve Consent Calendar presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. The FY 2022 Expenditure Budget Second Quarter Appropriations. Okay.
Second quarter appropriations are presented for you there in the right-hand column. I would request that the board approve the appropriations as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay, second by Mr. McRoberts. I will open the floor for any questions or discussion.
I have a wife that works for the school system for conflict interest, but my paperwork is on file in the office, and I have brought on it without being...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cook. I will also disclose that my husband works for the sheriff's office, but my conflict disclosure is on file with the county. Anyone else?
And I will continue with that. I will disclose that my wife and I both work for the school system, and my file, my paperwork is on file, and I will... I can vote on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horni. Any questions or discussion? Okay. If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Let's see. Next, we have the Mount Rogers Community Service Performance Contract. Mr. Bear, would you like to...
The Sandy Brown has sent their performance contract to it. There's pages 116 and 117 of your agenda, is a short summary of the contract, and then we included all of the paperwork that goes with the performance contract. I would request that the board grant their approval of the community services performance contract.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the approval of the Mount Rogers Community Service Performance Contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion or questions? Okay. If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda are appointments. Mr. Bear, I believe we have several appointments.
Yeah, there's a handout presented in front of you for the Alcohol Safety Action Program Board. I would request that you all appoint Sheriff Foster to this to replace Sheriff Donegan, who was previously on that board. I'm assuming there are no objections from Sheriff Foster.
I don't know how I could say it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Sheriff Charlie Foster to the Alcohol Safety Action Program Board. Any discussion or questions regarding that? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Okay. Congratulations, Sheriff Foster.
Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, Mr. Billy Anderson just gave us his letter indicating that he is no longer going to serve on that, so don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to review or come up with a name. We will keep this on the agenda in the future if no one has a name today.
Okay. Does anyone have a name? I haven't found it this time.
And for the Consortium Board, I don't think we need any action right now. We will confirm on that when it makes certain for our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Okay. We will move down to Staff Reports. We'll start with the Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Madam Chair, just a few highlights from the month. You know that we've been working on broadband, and this is public now, so I can go into a little more detail than we've been able to so far. The state received 57 applications representing 84 localities, and the state budget for expanding broadband using both state funds and ARPA funds is $750 million. They received requests for about $950 million. So there are some folks that will be unfunded. They're going through now, pulling out some duplicates and sort of questioning, you know, where the funding can best be directed. So the good thing is, there was nearly $1.2 billion in matching funds that were pledged along with the grant funds in this project. So I would say that we have a reasonably good shot at seeing one of our projects funded. We do have two applications representing With County. One is a wireless partnership with Chantel, and again, this is public. It's on the DHCD website, so if these are new details to you, you know, now you know. And Chantel has been a very good partner with us in this, and we look forward to seeing where this partnership goes. The other partnership is Point Broadband, the former Bristol-Virginia Utilities Board, Optonet. There've been a couple of others since then. They have been working with the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission to submit a fiber proposal that includes the unserved parts of Washington Smith and With Counties. So as we work through this process with them, we'll try to provide all the information that they request and try to get us to the best possible solution for the unserved and underserved residents of With County. So we're expecting to hear from DHCD by the end of December about what they're going to fund, but there's a lot of work for them to do, and there will be some for us to do in the meantime. So that's moving forward. So is our comprehensive plan. The contractor is working on the data that they've received. They've got nearly 800 survey responses back. They've talked to a lot of folks outside of public meeting settings, too. They've gotten some focus groups done here, and so they're actually into writing the plan now. There will be additional public meetings that are scheduled for October. They're going to have some additional input sessions and be able to share with some folks what some of their preliminary ideas are. So we'll get those out to you as they get scheduled. On the 911 side, we are working to implement emergency medical dispatch, and there's a state deadline to do that. I believe we have to offer it by the end of 2023. The first step in that is making sure that our emergency dispatchers can do CPR over the phone, so they all have to learn CPR if they don't, and then learn technical or telecommunicator CPR to be able to give those instructions over the phone. So we're working with that. We do still continue to have some staffing challenges in the 911 center. Our lead dispatcher has stepped down effective in October, so we're going to be looking at what we can do to sort of reorganize and reallocate some resources there. So I'll get back to you on those, I expect, in early October. You know that Ms. Sweeney applied to the Withland Foundation for a playground grant to replace the playground equipment at Ager Park. They didn't fund it, but they did offer her some suggestions about other places that she can look for funding, so she will continue to try to get some funding to support that effort. Mr. Bear and I continue to meet weekly to try to update our personnel policy. We're looking to get that to you later this fall and have it in place come January 1st for our employees. If you haven't seen the pictures on Facebook, Mr. McCabe has been working with our vendor, getting the gear out to our first responders, so firefighters will expect by the end of this week have all of their bunker gear. There's one hangup with that in the Fire and Rescue Committee heard last night. There's a clip that goes on the helmets. It's probably stuck on a boat off the coast of California somewhere. They have to get those clips to finalize the helmets, so the helmets are coming in later than the gear. So at least the new gear will be on our firefighters here in the next week. Last week, we did hit a new high for countywide COVID cases. We had never hit over 300 in a single day before, and our total cumulative cases for the day reached over 300 for the first time last week at 311. So that's a new peak. Do continue to track and sort of see where we're at with the COVID numbers, just so we're aware of where we're at. And I did have the opportunity to meet with the other county governments in the regions 12 and 13 for VACO last week, had a pretty good online discussion, and as you can imagine, broadband was the number one topic of conversation. So we were all excited about the potential that's coming out of that. That's it for my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
So with the Withland Foundation, I know this is like the second or third project that we set up that direction, and they've not funded it. Was, I guess from my understanding, what's the holdup or what's the cry to you that we're not meeting?
The primary one on this one is that they said that we needed more details for the plan, and we did have to put it together fairly quickly to be able to meet their deadline. We'll continue to try to come up with projects that work for them and fit in their scope, but this one, they wanted more detail on than they got. We thought we were pretty detailed, and Ms. Sweeney did a good job with the application, but it just didn't meet their expectations.
I mean, it's just kind of frustrating. They say they're here to support, and they haven't supported.
It's challenging.
I know three projects that was... that I thought was good projects for them.
Any other questions for Mr. Hankins? If none, thank you, Mr. Hankins. Thanks for everything you're working on. Okay. We will move down to the County Administrator, Mr. Bear.
First thing is revenue sharing resolutions. You approved the capital improvement plan last time. Mr. Kenter has put that in. I wish I could show you all the information that's required for these applications, but he's got to put in maps, he's got to put in capital improvement plan, he's got to put in information about his deeds, plats, right of ways, all of that. These are the final two items that I know of that he needs to finalize this application. So I know that Mr. Smith is interested in this, so I'll ask if he'll make a motion to approve the resolution for us to apply for Muskrat Drive.
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Cook to approve the revenue sharing resolution for Muskrat Drive. Any questions or discussion? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'll ask him to do the same for South Crest Drive.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Cook for the revenue sharing resolution for South Crest Drive. Any discussion on that one? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Bear, just thank Mr. Kenter for all he has worked on those two right there. I know the residents appreciate the support. We hope everything comes out well with it, so everything's in, and to the best of our knowledge, all i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so... Next item is the VACO credentials for 2021. This is for their annual meeting. Historically, we have named our chairman of the board as our voting delegate and named an alternate that is going to that conference as the alternate. So I know Mr. Vault is planning to attend, and I do not remember which of the rest of you are planning to attend.
I'll be there.
You were going as well?
Yes, sir.
I'd recommend a motion to approve Mr. Vault as our voting delegate and Supervisor Lawson as our alternate delegate.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm assuming I do not need to abstain of that for any reason, so aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Next item is a little bit of information on for right now, but we will need to take action on it. We have gotten our census numbers in. As a whole, the county dropped 812 is the final, based on the revised census numbers that we got in. I have provided you a spreadsheet there showing you the change from 2010 and what our equal district population would need to be, and what our current variance is from equal district populations. So we are... You can see the deviations run there from a small of 1.41% to the upper side of 3.88%. We are allowed to have up to a 5% differential in that. In order to correct the differential, basically what you would need to do would be expand the area of Spiebel Lead Mines and Fort Chisel and decrease the area of East Withville, West Withwell, and Blacklick. And that's, you know, what we would look at is if we're going to start, we'd start with the Lead Mines area and see where we can add a census tract in that makes sense with logical boundary bad lines to bring it up, and then Fort Chisel District would have to move into taking some of the East Withville District there, and then Spiebel District would have to come up into the Blacklick District. I mean, that's just, you know, one option right there to look at it, to try to equal I mean, that's just, you know, one option right there to look at it, to try to equal these numbers out. So I would request you all take a look at it, consider it, see if you want to try to bring these variances down a little bit in the process. But if you decide to leave it as it is, we can proceed with that, we can advertise for the redistricting like that and do it. One challenge that we face, Lennon's not here, but we have faced before, currently they are doing the redistricting on the House and Senate seats. And what makes it a little bit peculiar is if, I'll just say, they decide to give Lead Mines District to a Senator from the east of us and all the rest of us, Senators west of us, and then we come back and we change the Lead Mines District, then we end up with there being some people maybe in the Fort Chisel District that are now in this Senator's district and others, and that, and the state doesn't go back and change their lines, so we have split precincts, and we have to ask for those variances in the process. So there are some advantages to remaining as we are. We are, we are fortunate that all of ours stayed relatively close, but as you all look at it, we'll put it on the next agenda for guidance. Brandon Moore is our GIS technician, and if, if I can certainly work with him to, to try to present some proposals for you all, and we could have some committee meetings if we want to, to discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, at the last meeting, you all approved funding for the nine sheriff deputies that were not included with the bonus from the Compensation Board. I would request that you all approve the amendment and appropriation. It's not ARPA funding, but it's CARES funding, as shown on page 200 of your agenda there, in the amount of $83,967. I'm sorry, yes. That is the ARPA bonus for the sheriff's side, not what you all approved last time. This is strictly for what the state has provided in funding for the Compensation Board positions. This is that amount, the $27,000 you all approved at the last meeting. So this is just putting it into the budget.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Cook?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion regarding that? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And the last item, I would request that you all would approve the transfer of $250,000 from the Industrial Development Reserve Fund to the General Fund and amend and appropriate the same for Progress Park Professional Services. These funds will be used for engineering design of Progress Park improvements.
So moved.
Okay, sorry, I was on the wrong page there. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding the Progress Park Budget Amendment request? If none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, that's all.
Okay. Next, under staff reports, we have County Attorney, Mr. Farthing.
Madam Chairman, not a lot of activity from my office for the Board, which is normally a good thing. I did forward an email to you late this afternoon, just with an update on the opioid litigation, so that was just our counsel providing us an update with some information on that. Other than that, you know, some projects I'm working on, reviewing contracts and things for different departments and fire departments and things, so unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Farthing? And I should ask if anyone had any questions for Mr. Bear. If none, we will move down to Board Reports. Okay, Mr. Smith, you want to start us out?
I'd like to congratulate all of the folks that was selected to hunt at the Progress Park, and thank Kevin Williams and the Department of Game and the Animal Fisheries, I think it's Department of Wildlife Resources now, for all their support and work in getting this done. So I know there's a lot of happy people out there. They got chosen and guessed as well, so I'll be smiling. I didn't get chosen, but I got selected as a guest. But no, I do appreciate everything that Kevin done, and then working with the Department of Game and the Animal Fisheries, so please place that on. That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we have District 2, West Withville. Nothing at this time? Okay, Mr. McRoberts?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Horney, District 6, Spiebel.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time, y'all making it easy on me. Okay, and I do not have anything at this time either. So, looks like we are down to our closed meeting. I entertain a motion that we go into closed session under Code of Virginia Section 2.2-371185. Okay, have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are now in closed session. Okay, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to come out of closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, Mr. McRoberts, will you please read the certification?
Okay, resolution, certification, closed meeting. Whereas With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmed recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution apply. And two, only such public business matters as identified in this motion convening the closed meeting or heard discussed or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. I make a motion exempting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to ratify the certification. Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to authorize staff to approve the engineering agreement for Progress Park Sewer and Rail.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
Was that a aye?
Aye.